So, good evening to you all. Thank you for being present this evening. And as we start what I believe will be our last regular meeting of 2022, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a lot of anticipation and prosperity in the, in the new year. So with that, we will get started with our meeting with a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For Mayor Marshburn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on Councilmember Matthews, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also be responsible for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Oh, merciful heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you in this special season where we celebrate your birth and pray that one day we'll have peace on earth to make so many things come true. Lord, I pray for our country. I pray for our military that can't be home this weekend, this, this season for Christmas, and just be with them, give them comfort, give comfort to the families, and just one day, maybe all of them can come home. Father, be with us council now as we take on issues that pertain to our community. Help us to make wise decisions and vet everything thoroughly so the things that we do will be pleasing to all the citizens of Garner. And we just ask this season, Lord, just let families be together and just understand your true love. And I lift these prayers up in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Okay, the first item of business is always something called petitions and comments, and I'm going to ask the town clerk if she has any persons who have signed up for petitions and comments this evening. I think she didn't hear me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, no one has signed up.
No, sir.
Okay. Are there persons who came to the meeting this evening who desire to make comments or petitions to the council? Now will be a time for you to let me know of that. Okay. All right. Counsel, the next item before us is the adoption of the agenda. What say you?
A move.
Suck it.
Okay, motion properly made and suck it. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, it's approved. Thank you. No presentations this evening that I'm aware of, Mr. Manager or others, is that right? None? Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, the next item of business is the consent agenda. There are eight items on there. You've had a chance to look at those. Unless someone has a need to pull any one of those, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
A move.
Suck it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
In the opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move right into the next item of business, which will be public hearings. There are five of those this evening, but the first one that we will have this evening will be a quasi judicial hearing. So I'm going to read regulations relating to that, so everybody knows the process we will go through. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she, number one, has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, number two, has any ex parte communications, number three, has any close familial, business, or other association or relationship with an affected person, number four, has a financial interest in the outcome of the case. It's noted that this is a fact finding hearing and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose any information received or discussed pertaining to the case outside of the hearing. And counsel, I will pause at this point in time to ask about the ex parte or this comment here. Have there been any? None. Okay, thank you. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk in this town, excuse me, the staff report is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection by the applicant or another person withstanding. So at this point in time, if you expect to offer testimony for this public hearing or any of the other ones, I wish you would make yourself known to the clerk back in the corner and she will have you sworn in.
Do you solemnly sincerely truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth?
Okay, thank you all. So I will call the first public hearing, a special use permit, SUP SP 2107, Tryon Station Apartments, and I'll call on Ms. Allison Jones for the staff presentation and open the public hearing. Ms. Jones.
Sorry about that. Got to pull it up now. Good evening. I'm here to present Tryon Station Apartments, SUP SP 2107. The applicant is Kelly Development Company. The owner is Cho Singh Yap. Location is 1509 Creech Road. The tract size is 17.88 acres. They're requesting to develop a multifamily residential community of more than 100 dwelling units, not to exceed 9.8 acres per dwelling unit. The site may also be identified as Wake County Pin, 1712 71 95 35. It's a multifamily residential, um, site plan. It's going to be a special use permit. The current zone is multifamily B, MFB 245, condition, excuse me, used 245. It's not within an overlay district. The setbacks for this project are 35 feet front, 25 rear, side 15, it's 30 feet between buildings or a triangle method, and the corner setback is 25 feet. Neighborhood meeting. Staff identify 41 properties within a neighborhood meeting radius. The neighborhood meeting was held July 7th of 2022 at Creech Road Elementary School at the Pickett Shelter. About 34 people attended. I just want to also point out that this case was submitted before the July 5th adoption of the new ordinance, so they're only required to have one neighborhood meeting. And this is the overall site plan. Open space requirements. Open space areas will be owned and maintained by the apartment community. The open space is being met with combination of open fields along with playgrounds, clubhouse, and pool house, excuse me, pool. Required open space is 10%, and they're providing 10.8%. And they're also providing more landscaping with preserving some of the existing vegetation as well. Tree coverage. The minimum coverage 18 to 20% sliding scale. They're providing 22%. As I just stated, some of the open space coverage and tree coverage is being, is more than what's stated because of existing vegetation that is being preserved. The street and permanent buffers. The street buffer is 15 feet, and the perimeter buffer is 35 on the western side and 15 on the eastern buffer. Lighting meets the UDO and staff policies. All of the site lighting will have zero uplight, low glare with warm lighting exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking. For one bedroom is one and a half spaces. For two bedroom is two spaces, and for three bedroom is two and a half spaces. There are 418 spaces required for this project, and they're providing 424. The inspection department to go with fire has approved the plan as proposed. Site does have FEMA designated flood plain and identified streams as well. A small wetland is also present in the southeastern edge of the buffer. However, the permanent buffers will remain undisturbed, so that won't be an issue for this development. Any encroachments into any of the environmentally sensitive areas will require a permit from the governing authority, and that will be required prior to the interest of building permit, if applicable. Tryon Station Apartments is a multifamily development that is not located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to quality, water quality requirements for nitrogen and water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, 25 year storm events. This plan does propose one wet retention pond to satisfy the water quantity and quantity requirements, and nitrogen offset payment will be required for this project as well. This project will be connected to public water and sewer systems provided by City Raleigh. The project will have two access points off of Creech Road, two points of access off of Tryon Road extension as well. Creech Road will be widened to half the Major Collector Street, a cross section with 150 foot left turn lane in the northbound direction onto the site. The Tryon Road extension will be constructed to the Major Collector Street cross section and will run from Creech Road into the property line of the project. Protection access will be accommodated with sidewalks along both sides of the streets. Sidewalk will be extended along the frontage of Creech Road, and those both sides of the streets are talking about the Tryon Road extension. After technical review of the plans and provisions, staff finds that the project meets the requirements following the site specific conditions of approval. Following the special use permit, site plan approval, construction drones shall be submitted to the engineering department, oh, sorry. Prior to the issuance of building permit, payment of engineering fees shall be paid to Town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the utility fee shall be paid to City Raleigh. And prior to the issuance of building permit, voluntary annexation petitions shall be submitted to the Garner Plan Department. And prior to the issuance of the building permit, the Garner Engineering Department shall be in receipt of the nitrogen payment. It's in the staff's presentation. I'm here for questions. I believe the applicant may have a presentation too as well, and they are here too.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones, for your presentation. Yeah, I'll ask council members if they have questions for you. I'll start with Ms. Behringer, maybe?
None.
None? Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews, anything? Okay, Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Vance.
Questions?
Okay, thank you. We will hear, I guess, from the applicant at this point in time if you'll come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Toby Coleman with Smith Anderson here on behalf of the applicant, Kelly Development. Good to see you all here. I have a brief presentation, and I also have a small packet. I thought it might be easiest, our application was not included in the, the stuff was in your packet and our specific responses to all of the criteria. Rather than going through them at some length, I figured it might just be easiest to enter it into record. I've given a copy to the town clerk. I've got six copies here. What you're going to find in there is, the first tab is a, a, specific responses to the criteria. The, the second tab is a copy of the ordinance that was enacted, the rezoning ordinance that was enacted at your last meeting that rezoned the property and modified and revised the future land use map designation consistent with the apartment use. The third tab is the traffic report and the CV for Lyle Overcash, who is here. He's with Kimley Horn. He's a traffic engineer. And the fourth tab is a copy of the, the valuation, the impact stu, valuation impact study, excuse me, by, for this property along with the CV for our appraiser. And so with that, I'll just briefly go through. Let's see here. And one thing, just so I get this excuse out of the way early. My wife had a baby a couple weeks ago. It's our third child. And so my brain is a little bit frazzled. So if I take a second to answer your questions, it, I'm going to blame it on that. Now, I may come back here in six months and you guys say, Toby, this is still not better. But for now, that's what I'm blaming it on. See, there we go. All right. So as you all know, you guys have seen this a couple times before. This is a special use permit application for 176 unit affordable housing, Lytec Development, serving families with incomes between 50 and 70% AMI. This is located at 1509 Creech Road there on the left. You can see a rent, an architectural rendering on the right. The reason that we have to come before you for a special use permit, as you all know, is that under your code, anything with more than 100 units is required to get a special use permit. The site plan is something you all have reviewed before. It's also something that staff has reviewed. I, I call out, we called out a couple of things on the site plan. Just I highlighted them just for ease of, of reference. One is that, you know, we went to the neighbors in the staff report. We have a report from a neighborhood meeting done in 2021. We actually did go back to the neighbors a few months ago before, before the, the public hearing and had another neighborhood meeting. The one thing we heard from the Gibson Pond neighbors, which is, so this, this picture is sort of tilted, so left is north pretty much, and the Gibson Pond neighbors are to the north, northwest. They said, hey, look, they really didn't have a lot of opposition or didn't express a lot of opposition. They did indicate that they would like a fence in addition to the 35 foot landscape perimeter buffer there on that, on their side of the property. So that green line is where we're putting the fence. It is outside of the landscaped area. That is something I think you all have seen before, but just wanted to highlight it because it was in response to neighbors. The other thing that we got comments on, and I think it was noted as a change, I think it was discussed at the last meeting, but the playground on the south side of Tryon, which again is on the right side of that new Tryon Road extension that goes through the middle of the property, has been pushed further to the south, further away from the road. That was a result of, of comments. So with that, I would like to, just to, just to sort of check the boxes here. We are available for questions. We have our full team here, both Ted Hillbrow from Kelly Development, Chris Bostick, who is the landscape architect planner from Kimley Horn, as well as Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Overcash, the two experts. I would like to get them just to come up and briefly introduce themselves, certify, or attest that the reports that you've been handed are in fact true and accurate copies of the report. Nick, if I could have you come up first. So his, so the, the, Mr. Kirkland will, will talk about his criteria, his, the report. If you could certify that the report that's in tab four is a true and accurate copy, and either tab four is a true and accurate of the one you prepared and just summarize.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. Address is 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh. So I don't forget, the copy that is in tab four is true and accurate and the same one that we prepared. I'll, I'll go through this briefly. My qualifications are, I'm a certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina. I've been accepted as an expert before this board as well as before other boards across the state well over 100 times as an expert in property value impacts. What we've done for this is we've looked at other similar multifamily, both affordable multifamily as well as supplemented with non-affordable multifamily, and found that this is consistent in distance to the adjoining residences with other uses. In fact, this is actually further than a number of the other affordable housing, talking from building to building. And we have matched pairs which show no significant impact to the adjoining property values for homes cited or developed next to these. And so based on this, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will not have any impact on the adjoining property values, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go into further detail.
Okay, counsel, asking generals, anybody have a question for Mr. Kirkland? Okay, none at this time, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Toby, as you come back, I meant to do this earlier, and I'll offer you a congratulations for your
Oh, thank you.
yet another experience in fatherhood, right?
Yet another. Yeah, number three. And then I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Overcash to come up and his, if you could go ahead and also certify that the, that the memo and, and related materials in tab three that the council has is a true and accurate copy.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, the memo that we prepared is under tab three along with my, my resume. Quick introduction, I'm Law Overcash with Kimley Horn, 421 Fettle Street in Raleigh. Been with Kimley Horn about two years now. Have about 29 years of experience and have worked on hundreds of TIA's and traffic studies, both for public and private clients across North Carolina and here in Garner as well. Just a couple quick highlights of the, the memo that you have in front of you. The TIA for the project was submitted to DOT and the town in December of 21, actually. DOT wrote their acceptance letter and the recommendations in January of this year in '22. Couple changes between the, the study analysis and, and what with the final site plan that's in front of you today. DOT required that two site driveways on Creech Road be restricted to right in, right out, and concurred with the recommendation of the 150 foot northbound left turn lane there on Creech Road, turning into Tryon Road Extension. But in addition to these requirements, the plan proposes to construct Tryon Road Extension as a three lane section with bike lanes and, and sidewalks, and then also provides left turn lanes at Creech Road and then also at the site driveway there on Tryon Road Extension. So we reanalyzed the study area intersections there at the site with the kind of reconfigured build volumes and found that all levels of service that built out are projected to be, were operating at acceptable conditions. So no additional geometric or signalization improvements are recommended beyond what is reflected on the site plan. So therefore, in my professional opinion, that these improvements will mitigate for the traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project and promote public safety. In addition, the improvements in streets allow for safe and efficient access for fire, rescue, and law enforcement in accordance with applicable standards. If you guys have any questions, I'll take those.
Thank you, Mr. Overcash. Council members, any questions for Mr. Overcash? Hey, here. Okay, Mr. De-
Since this is a different hearing than the last one, still have concerns about that left-only turn, it's the only way to turn out of the project, going left on the Tryon is in the center, and the speed limit is 45, and there's the curve there, and there are hundreds of future units there. And the rec, suggestion was made at some point to put in some type of flashing signalization. In looking at your, the traffic report, I saw that the speed limit is also 45 there. Do you think that the reduction in the speed limit along Creech Road in this area would improve the exit movement from the property?
The location of the Tryon Road Extension is, I think we mentioned last time, is on a tangent section there of Creech Road. And so we went back and looked at, if it's 50 miles, like the design speed is 50 miles per hour, if it's signed at 45, then you need about 500, 600 feet of site, site distance. And, and when the wide Creech Road for the left turn lane and clear, there's a lot of trees that are, you know, clear, close on the road. The sight lines are gonna be good, and you have about 500, 600 feet to that curve. Now, we talked about whether we would ask some additional signage, which would say, like intersection ahead, 500 feet, that type of thing. And so there's some advisory signs that we would recommend, that they would probably put on, on the northbound approach of Creech Road as you come up to Tryon Road Extension. I think that's, you know, I think it would be important to make sure the, the road will be lighted. I think adding visibility on, on lights would also enhance quite a bit. As far as a flashing, flashing light, probably not recommended out front, you know. I think when we looked at some of the accident data, I think it's a lot more kind of up, up Creech, where there's been some pedestrians on, on the side of road have been hit. So at least we, you know, providing a sidewalk there on Creech, which would be good.
You think that the, the widening increases the sight lines, and the addition of some additional signage would be enough at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from council?
Follow-up?
Yes.
And just, you mentioned the lights, Mr. Overcash, that side, that'll be improved. We'll have lights on Creech Road, or streetlights?
Mr. Bostick can confirm that, but I would, I would imagine, unless I misspoke.
Chris Bostick, Kimley Horn, good evening. I can confirm that there'll be lights, and obviously you'll have the lights associated with the development itself, that'll be there too. They'll also be providing greater visual acuity out there for folks.
But will there be streetlights on Creech Road? There will be?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Bostick, while he's there? I guess not, Mr. Bostick. And anything else for Mr. Overcash? Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Other witnesses?
That's all we have. I would move that the, the staff report, the packet that we handed up, and this presentation be entered into evidence, and that Mr. Overcash and Mr. Kirkland be accepted as experts, respectively, in traffic engineering and in property appraisal.
Okay. I believe without objection, that would be proper in order.
And we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for, okay. All right. Ms. Jones, where are you? Okay, yeah. Any, anything else from the town? Okay. This is a public hearing, so if you came here this evening desiring to speak on this issue, now would be your opportunity. You should have already been sworn by our clerk, so is there anyone who came to speak either against or in approval of this particular project? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counsel, if you desire to have a brief discussion amongst yourself, that would be proper at this time. If you want to make comments, otherwise, we will proceed to the motion. Any observations or comments anybody cares to make?
A question on that, on the signage, whose responsibility is that to reach out to DOT to get that in place, or? Cordon?
I'm not certain of the answer to that, so if there's anybody who can answer that, Mr. Overcash, perhaps?
Overcash again. Yes, that'd be part of the driveway permit, as we go forward with the design and construction of Tryon Road Extension. The signage for that road would be special because it's a, you know, it's a major road. So that would, that'd be part of that driveway permit process.
It's a signage along Creech Road would be included in that as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Are you ready for a motion? Okay.
I find the application S U P SP 2107 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits, is identified in Article 3.9.2. D. Therefore, I move that the town council approve S U P SP 2107, the Tryon Station Department should the five site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Motion properly made and seconded by Councilmember Behringer. If there's no further discussion, I will ask you, if you favor the motion that is properly before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you are opposed, would you vote no, and there is none? So the motion carries, and that will move forward. So thank you all for your participation on that. Good luck with the project. Okay, the next public hearing is not a quasi-judicial hearing, but it's a voluntary contiguous annex, annexation petition. And so I will recognize Mr. Bowie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will be presenting annexation 22-14 Caddy Road South. Property is owned by Cambridge Caddy LLC. Location is Caddy Road. Trek size is 9.55 acres and 1.93 acres of US 401 right-of-way, for a total of 11.48 acres. This petition follows a request for public water and sewer for CZ SB-2105. Caddy Road South was approved on April 4, 2022, for a commercial three-lot subdivision. Pretty Raleigh, Raleigh-Garner merger agreement and annexation petition is required for an extension of service. Recommended motion is adopt annexation ordinance. Here we have an aerial photo of the site. And the Caddy Road South, which was approved on April 4 of this year. Are there any questions?
Also, questions for Mr. Bowie. On my right, anybody? On my left, anybody? I believe there are none. Mr. Bowie, thank you. Is there anyone here who came prepared to speak in regards to this public hearing of this matter? If so, would you let it be known at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none, unless there are any other questions, I'll close the public hearing. And counsel, what say you? If you have comments or questions now, excuse me, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt a, adopt a ordinance 2022-5166.
Okay, motion made, probably seconded. All in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? No, and there is none. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Okay. Okay, item three under public hearings is the planned development conditional rezoning CZ PO 2201 Golden Trace. And I will recognize Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, our planning director for staff presentation. Welcome back, sir.
I thought we had, I thought we had them all open. Here we go. But yes, again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Jeff Trezenberg, planning director. This is the Golden Trace Conditional Zoning Request, public hearing. I'll go over both the zoning portion of the request, as well as the proposed master plan. The applicant is Tucker Ennis, who is a member of Lanar Corporation. You see the owners there, the Slaters, and various members of the Bryan family. The total acreage that is being proposed as part of this development is just over 45 acres. It includes the whole portions of three parcels on the north side of New Bethel, and portions of two additional. At the time the application was submitted, their request was for a planned residential development under the old ordinance. So this is again, a PRD, I think is probably the term that you're familiar with. Today, we would classify this as a residential four conditional zoning request. So it does work out to be between two and four units per acre. Again, just to orient you, here is New Bethel Road, coming down from NC 50. You have the Oak Park Development on your right. Turn here for Clifford Road. Keep coming down, and then you'll see this assemblage right here to your left, a very similar grouping of parcels still undeveloped here on the right. Then these parcels here are part of the Oak Manor subdivision that is under development today. And then, of course, South Garner High School, and Glen Creek. So again, here is a street view from Google Maps. And again, looking at the adjacent zoning and land use. Again, keeping in mind that this will be a version of R4. You'll find R4 develop, or R4 zoning around much of the area for the neighborhoods that have been built, including Harper's Landing, Oak Manor, and Oak Park. Been a pretty extensive zoning, rezoning history here, going back to 2003. You see some of those projects there. But again, most of these are going from a rural agricultural type zone to some type of residential subdivision zone. The anomaly there would probably be the high school, which again was a residential zoning district, but obviously not for a neighborhood. So currently, the property is zoned R2 under the new ordinance, so that district would allow single-family lots at a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. The R4 is one step up, but is largely the same type of purpose. These zoning districts are established to accommodate lower density and medium density, single-family homes. The district does encourage high-quality development and open space protection. The R2 is a little further away from, from non-residential areas than R4 would be. But again, the, the focus there is, is on residential. So for their permitted use table, they are proposing only single-family detached residential uses. The maximum density would not exceed 2.73, with a maximum of 130 dwelling units. HOA would be involved in ownership of a lot of the common and open space areas. With that PRD, you, the ordinance did require you to compare your proposal against the standards of the R12 zoning district. And then there were specific things that needed to be pointed out as conditions, if they were deviated from by more than a certain percentage. So they are requesting lots to be as low as 4,680, although they do have two different lot sizes and styles. And here you see the differentiations in their proposed setbacks as compared to R12. So the front yard going from 30 to 20, but maintaining the garage setback at 22, to ensure that there's not an overhang on the sidewalks. Rear yards would go from 20 to 15. They are asking for a side yard, instead of six minimum with 15 combined, to go to five minimum with 10 combined. And the corner lot side going from 20 to 10. Here they have some conditions about the amenities, as well as having, all units will have a two-car garage. Some things there about masonry finishes, and two types of siding patterns. Also, all foundations would be of some kind of turned-down slab variety, so something that would mimic more of a crawl space, and have that elevated finish with the masonry on the front and sides. Again, let's see, front-loaded garage doors would have windows in them. They do have some alley-loaded product, as you'll see in a few minutes. 12-inch eaves, the outdoor deck, porch, and patio space of 100 square feet, the covered front porch, and again, some other things such as cosmetic brackets for cantilevered projections, and one unit, one window operable per habitable floor, on the side elevations with trim. Vinyl siding is prohibited. That's one thing that we do ask when folks want to go to a five-foot side setback, excuse me, that they not use vinyl for fire purposes. Again, the upgrade to black aluminum picket fencing, and a few other things there. This does fall within the Lower Swift Creek overlay district, so any single-family detached development is limited to a maximum of 30% total impervious. And again, just describing the overall neighborhood character, which I kind of did at the very beginning, mostly single-family detached residences, with just a few townhomes mixed in here and there. The area is definitely influenced heavily by the presence of South Garner High School. DOT stopped collecting traffic data on, on New Bethel in 2015. So for 2017 to 2021, we do not have any data from them. But obviously, we all know that the traffic is increasing. And they did have to complete a TIA as part of this, both required by the town and DOT. This was completed in January of this year. There were not recommended any intersection improvements, other than their 100 feet of internal storage at each point of egress from the site. Otherwise, DOT determined that the widening that's being done, and existing shared turning and through movements for this particular intensity of development would be sufficient. Just as a reminder, from recent meetings, this project is located in the impact area of the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement. And since this project did require a TIA, it is expected then that this project, if approved, would make the contribution to that impact area project. Neighborhood meeting was held on May 18 at 6:00 with approximately five people in attendance, but all of them were either owners or related to those owning the property. So there were no questions regarding the project, but they did note that a brief discussion on the history of the property took place. And here is the overall master plan. Again, two entrances off of New Bethel. The site is impacted by a fairly large electrical transmission easement that runs along the eastern margin of the property. But it, that is an area that can accommodate greenways. So in talking with the Parks and Rec Department, we did, this is not actually on the greenway plan today, but it was on an older version of the greenway plan. And given everything that's happening in and around, we talked with them about providing a public greenway here that could provide at least some good pedestrian connections, alternate routes over to the high school, as well as some, some internet interconnectivity between Harper's Landing and Oak Manor. You see the two different types of products here. In the yellow, you have the alley-loaded product, and in the orange, the, the front garage products. We have their main amenity over here, and the stormwater happening along this pretty, decently large stream here that runs the whole length of the northern and western sides of the property. Here is just a sampling of some of the proposed elevations that are- Here is just a sampling of some of the proposed elevations that are in their planned residential development proposal. So you see here the illustration of the commitment to things such as the windows and the garage doors, multiple types of siding, some amount of masonry on the front. And then here on the bottom, some of the alley-loaded products. So the garages will be in the back. Again, just summarizing the lot and setback information, but that was also included in the conditions. The tree canopy requirement is a sliding scale from eighteen to twenty percent. They do envision at least fourteen percent of preservation with the balance to be met by new canopy for a total of eighteen and a half percent minimum. I'm sure those figures will continue to be revised as they move forward and planning staff will continue to check those numbers to make sure that they're meeting the appropriate requirement. There's a for PRDs, there is a twenty-five-foot undisturbed perimeter setback. So it's not necessarily a buffer, but where there is vegetation today, that will be undisturbed. And of course, our usual street tree requirement every forty feet. There are no FEMA-designated flood planes along the property, but here again, you can see that that blue line stream that comes all the way from Oak Park up the northern and western sides of the property with a couple of fingers branching further into the site. So wherever those are determined to be perennial streams, those will be buffered with a fifty-foot Neuse River buffer on each side. In terms of stormwater, again, they will be required to detain the one and ten, one-ten- and twenty-five-year storm events. They envision two stormwater control measures, and they will satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements for nitrogen. Site will also be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Of course, there's plenty of that going in in the area, but they will be extending a good portion down New Bethel. Currently, most of the utilities in New Bethel stop right here at the creek. So they will be extending those to their site and through and connecting as required by Raleigh policy. For their open space, because it is a PRD, in return for clustering their homes more, they are also required to dedicate more open space. So instead of ten percent, it's twenty-five percent. They're easily exceeding that with a combination of preserved wetlands, preserved tree canopy, their greenway system, both public and private, and other other things that they have there. The open space areas, of course, will be maintained by that HOA. Lighting will continue to be evaluated as the project moves forward and will be required to meet our new UDO requirements, which were old staff policies on LED fixtures. And of course, after this, the project will move to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation on plan consistency. And once they have done that, it will return back to you as the council for a determination on reasonableness. And our recommendation tonight is that once you have heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that this case CZ PD twenty-two oh one be referred to the Planning Commission. And that is all that I have. The applicant does have a presentation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Treesberg. Let me see if council has any questions for you while you're there. Any down here? To my right. Okay, none, I believe. Thank you, sir, for the information. And that's all for the town, is that right? So does the applicant wish to be heard at this time? Identify yourself, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, members of council. I am Collier Marsh with Parker Poe here on behalf of the applicant. Almost dropped that, but I caught it. And so we also have a number of other members of our development team here that are available to answer your questions. We have Nick Williamson and Jesse Hardisty with McAdams. We have Tucker Ennis with Lennar, and then Kevin Dean with Kimley Horn. So all available if you do have questions on this project. We're calling this the Golden Trace Rezoning. And Jeff went through the project in quite a bit of detail, so I won't hit all the same points and just hit a few high notes. But this is the site and the surrounding area predominantly newer neighborhoods in the four-units-per-acre range. As an applicant, we always look to the town's comprehensive plan, the future land use map for guidance as to what the town envisions for a site when we pursue a rezoning. Here, property is designated as medium-density residential, contemplates a number of uses from single-family detached in the low end up to townhomes and potentially multifamily. Density range in this category is two point five to five units per acre. So we are right within that range and right within what's contemplated by the town's future land use map. What we're proposing here, as shown on the master plan, is a single-family detached community, but there are two product types. So the beigeish color would be front-loaded garage-in-front, single-family homes. And then the yellow color would be the rear-loaded home. So a mixture of product types creates a little more interest within the neighborhood, but also a range of prices and options for folks to live there. So as Mr. Treesenberg covered, some of the highlights with this project, this the site really lends itself to being good neighbors and being compatible with the surrounding area. So if you look at the perimeter, we do have some riparian areas as well as some easements on the eastern side. So what that means is that we're able to provide some pretty substantial buffers between ourselves and neighboring developments. There aren't any street stubs connection connecting to our site, so we don't have connectivity issues with folks in adjoining communities. So it really lends itself to a to a highly compatible development. Some of the highlights of the project, by taking advantage of the cluster option, what we're able to do, we're achieving more open space preservation. Twenty-five percent of the property would be preserved as open space. It's more than eleven acres. Of that, more than eighteen percent is tree coverage. And then even better, of that eighteen percent, we're actually able to achieve about fourteen percent of the existing trees will be preserved. Those streams and those environmentally sensitive areas are areas that we're prioritizing, preserving. But to take advantage of them, we're also activating them. So one of the PRD requirements is to make sure that you have a network of interconnected open space. And so we're doing that network by creating private trails, which are the purple color you see. And then the public trail is the green color on that the right-hand side or the eastern side of the property would be the public greenway that will allow connection to other neighborhoods in the area should should the opportunity arise on the other side of the property line. We also have a main amenity that will have a pool and a clubhouse that's on the left-hand side by a stormwater pond marked by a star. A little north of that will be another activated area, having decided exactly what would go there, but it's required to be activated with actual features that will draw people to use it. A number of zoning conditions developed throughout the project. And Jeff went through these in detail, so I won't I won't hit every one. But we do have a number of architectural commitments. There will be an HOA maintaining this community, and that main amenity is required to be under construction when we get our first CO, so that's not something that is an afterthought. At the end, there there will be a commitment, and and we're going to work with staff to make sure we get it exactly right. But we're familiar with the the White Oak and Bryan Road corridor improvements and the development agreement that was reached there. And so our team has agreed, we will follow the framework that was set, and we will pay our fair share towards those improvements. So with that, we have a number of folks here. We're happy to answer your questions on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. And before you leave, anybody have a question for Mr. Marsh before the members come up?
Mr. Daley. A question on why there wasn't just a R twelve development, that's the first part. Because what I see is a significant decrease in the size of lots. And I also see shrinking lots. And I see setback requests from council. So you could go ahead and do the ones that are listed by R twelve, but reductions from thirty-foot front yard to twenty-foot, rear twenty to fifteen, corner twenty to ten. So you're getting rid of the setbacks and shrinking them by thirty-three, twenty-five, and thirty-three, and fifty percent, and then also reducing the size of the lot. It seems like a pretty drastic and compacted living.
So the idea there is you've you've hit on why we wouldn't go for a traditional R twelve is to have those modifications for this site. And as I mentioned, the site kind of tells you how it wants to work and where areas can be preserved. And so by making those modifications, it lends itself to preserving the riparian areas, preserving more open space, hitting that twenty-five percent open space threshold. And also just the way the streets laid out, you know, that that's what fit on the site and that's what worked best. Not to mention, when you think about factoring in the corridor improvements and things like that, there's there are costs that this project would need to bear. So there's a a yield that we're looking at to make it work. So that's how we came upon this request.
You could maintain all of the elements of the PRD with the buffering and the preservation and have fewer units and larger lots and decent-sized setbacks. These are on with these setbacks, they're sort of on top of each other, and they're on top of the street.
So potentially, you could have larger lots, but to offset costs like the frontage improvement, so one of the requirements is that we're widening the frontage and and building the full major thoroughfare street section across our frontage. And so to offset infrastructure costs and things like that, we have to get unit counts up in a lower-density project, wouldn't be able to support that. And then also factoring in the down-the-line improvements, which were really only a drop in the bucket as far as the impact on that intersection, but it is a substantial cost for this development to contribute to those improvements at White Oak and Bryan Road.
I just have concerns when the lots get significantly smaller, almost to not quite fifty percent smaller, maybe sixty percent smaller, and then the setbacks. And seen those developments and.
Okay. Did anyone else of your group wish to testify?
Just here for questions.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Counsel, you want to, do you have any questions for any of the other folks with Mr. Marsh?
I have a question about the neighborhood meeting. It sounds interesting. So you had five people show up, and nobody asked any questions about the project.
No, so the folks that showed up were either the property owners or some relatives, and I believe one of the relatives is here. And so we talked about the history of the site, talked about, you know, the the use that the family had had done on the in the property in the past. And I mean, we told them what the project was, but it wasn't, you know, it's traditional, how is this going to impact my home? It was just a friendly discussion about the family history of the property and things that folks had had done in the woods in the past and experiences they'd had.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I think that's all for now, Mr. Marsh, unless we have some questions later. So it's a public hearing. Did anybody else come this evening desiring to speak to this issue, this project? Are there any persons in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask council for any discussion you care to have and then a motion.
I move that planned development conditional zoning request CZ PD two-two dash zero one be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Second.
Thank you. So council, you have the proper motion before you. So if you favor the motion as made by Councilmember Vance, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? No.
No.
Okay, this noted that the motion passes by a vote of four to one. And so this will go to the Planning Commission and come back at a future date. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay. All right, the next item before the council is Tier Two Conditional Rezoning Request, number CZ MP two-two zero six, Ackerman Road Subdivision. And Ashley Harris is going to make her presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I am here to present Conditional Rezoning CZ MP twenty-two oh six, Ackerman Road. General case information, the applicant is Construction Masters LLC, and the owner is the same. The location is zero Ackerman Road, and the tract size is approximately seven point five seven acres. This is a Tier Two Master Sketch Plan with written conditions. And the request is to rezone from a single-family residential R forty to a single-family residential R nine conditional C two fifty-five and multifamily residential MF one C two fifty-five, not to exceed thirty-three dwelling units. The site is located at and adjacent to nineteen thirty-two Ackerman Road. And there are a number of zoning conditions proposed that restrict the range of permissible uses and architectural and other conditions as well. And I will note that as of July of this year, this request would be amended to be adopted as R four conditional C two fifty-five and MF A conditional C two fifty-five. So again, here is the site location and aerial view. To the north, you can see Ackerman Road. And then the development is adjacent to the Ridgemore subdivision to plan right or and then Bryan Road Elementary to the south. And here is a Google Street View of the location on Ackerman Road. Adjacent zoning and land use. The site is surrounded on most sides by R four residential with some rural agricultural zoning just to the north and adjacent to the site. Those would have been R forty prior to the adoption of the new UDO, but that would have been converted to RA as of July seventh. And the adjacent land uses are all residential. To the north, it's single-family residential. And then to the east and west is the Ridgemore subdivision and the Bingham Station subdivision. There is some zoning history in the area. Most recently would be the conditional use zoning in two thousand and eighteen on Ackerman Road, and that was the Aurora subdivision. But there has been a number of zoning cases, most of which are for residential purposes dating back to the nineties. So as I said, the existing zoning of the current site is rural agricultural. And the RA district is primarily to accommodate agriculture, civil culture, and residential, also large lot, single-family uses, other other uses typically found in rural areas, including utility structures and other compatible uses. And as I noted, this would have been R forty under the old ordinance and is now RA. And so the proposed zoning is two zoning districts, the R nine C two fifty-five and MF one C two fifty-five. So the R nine would be applicable to the single-family houses and then the MF one to the townhouse. And so the applicant is proposing limiting their list of permissible uses to three, which would be townhouse units over four units per structure, single-family detached, and single-family residential or subdivision. They are also proposing a number of architectural conditions and site conditions, including two-car garages for the single-family with garage doors, with carriage door hardware and windows, as well as light fixtures. They're also proposing a combination of masonry and other finishes for the front elevations and that there shall be two types of fiber cement siding patterns. They are prohibiting vinyl siding, and they have provided at least a twenty-four-inch stone or masonry water table. All the foundations will be a foundation with a crawl space type, so elevated at least twelve inches. And that will have a brick or stone veneer as well. They're also proposing minimum eight-inch reefs and eaves on the front and rear facade with a minimum eight-inch roof overhang on all sides. They are including an outdoor deck patio screen porch, projecting covered front porch. And all single-family home dwelling units shall have at least one trimmed window per habitable floor on each side elevation, which will also include trim. That they are limiting, proposing no more than ten single-family homes on the property. The townhouse buildings also have a number of proposed conditions, including a maximum building height of forty feet or three stories, no vinyl siding as well on the townhomes, and no more than twenty-four townhome units constructed on the property. The townhome units will also have architectural conditions, including two types of siding types on the front facade and at least a thirty-inch stone or masonry water table on the front side and rear facades. The townhomes will also include a covered entry and at least three operable windows and at least one architectural decoration. And there will be a proposed amenity area of at least two hundred square feet, including seating, and at least a minimum of ten-inch rakes and eaves for the townhomes. This property does fall into the Lower Swift Creek Overlay District. And so as explained in Article five point four point one-three, there are some impervious standards that come into play here. that come into play here for residential developments. So new single-family detached residential subdivisions shall be limited to a maximum of thirty percent total impervious and multifamily residential developments, including townhomes, shall be limited to a maximum of fifty percent total impervious. The overall neighborhood character, Ackerman Road is a secondary road that has a connection to White Oak Road, which is a married, a major corridor with significant amount of daily, daily traffic. It's seen a good amount of residential development in the past and currently experiencing some growth. The area is supported by Bryan Road Elementary and South Garner High School and is near the Boydick Shopping Center. And there was no TIA triggered in association with this project because of the proposed density and the few units being built here. But NCUDOT did collect traffic data up until twenty fifteen and since then we can project that there has been continued traffic growth in the area. And also one thing to note is that because of the project did not require a TIA, therefore it is not subject to the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement because that is calculated based on numbers found in the TIA. And so there was a neighborhood meeting and staff identified fifty-two properties within the notification radius shown below and provided the list to the applicant and the neighborhood meeting was held on February second of twenty twenty-two. There were three in attendance. So this is the proposed master plan and as you can see, there, to the north section is the townhouse units that they are proposing and that would be fronted on a public alley that has access to Ackerman Road. And then there is a stream with required buffers that sort of bisects the two halves, the north and the south, and separates the single-family from the townhouse units. There is a pedestrian connection across that stream to connect kind of the two halves. And then in the southern portion is the single-family lots and the proposed stub connections to Hazy Hill Lane and Steam Engine Lane. Lots in multifamily one, they have a minimum lot width of eighteen feet and a front setback of twenty-five feet. And the building separation would be thirty feet or the triangulation method. And then in the detached R nine area, the minimum lot width is sixty feet, a minimum lot area of nine thousand square feet, front setbacks of twenty-five feet. Side setback would be six feet minimum, fifteen combined, and then rear and the corner side is twenty feet. Tree canopy cover is a sliding scale of eighteen to twenty percent, which was the rule at the time of Smithel, and the master plan envisions twenty-three percent, so one point seven fours acre of canopy via tree preservation. There are some required perimeter buffers between townhomes and adjacent single-family and the PRDs is twenty-five feet, which may be reduced to twelve and a half feet and the half of the original required plantings if adjacent buffers have continuous row of shrubs. Between townhomes and adjacent single-family is twenty-five feet, which can be reduced to thirty, by thirty percent with agreement from neighborhood property owners as long as the full planting material required of the original can be maintained. And there is no requirement between the single-family and the adjacent single-family in the PRDs. There is a required street buffer along Ackerman Road, which is twenty-five feet. And street trees must be provided approximately every forty feet along all roadways and internal drives, but not within parking lots. There are no FEMA designated floodplains, however, there is a buffered stream and wetlands that run through the site. And as I mentioned, that kind of runs through the center of the site between the townhouse and single-family. Ackerman Road is a residential master plan site that is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen as well as for the, excuse me, for the one, ten and twenty-five year storm events. The development proposes a single stormwater control measure and it will satisfy all quality and quantity requirements for nitrogen for again, the one, ten and twenty-five year storm events. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer for infrastructure and water will connect to and be extended from the existing lines on Ackerman Road. Sewer extensions from adjacent Bingham Station and Ridge Moore subdivisions will comply with Raleigh water policy. Open space, they were required to commit to ten percent open space, which is point seven six acres and they are anticipated to provide about twenty-three percent of open space, which is one point seven four acres. Open space areas will be maintained by an HOA and they will be met by qualifying conservation areas as well as a passive park and walkways. They are proposing to meet the UDO requirements for LED light fixtures. And for the next steps, this project would be sent to planning commission to determine plan consistency and then come back to you to determine reasonableness. And so the charge for tonight, staff recommends that once the town council has heard comments, concerns and questions from the general public, that the zoning condition request CZ MP twenty-two oh-six be referred to planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding the plan. And that is all I have for you tonight. I believe that the applicant is present to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, for your good presentation. Do, do councilmembers have any questions for Ms. Harris?
Mr. Mayor, it's been mentioned twice this evening that DOT stopped doing traffic counts. What was the reason for that?
I'm not sure that might be a question for Joffrey Leah or.
But he knows. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else from Ms. Harris?
I have a question. Thank you for the information. I have a question on the calculation of the open space and the tree canopy and on what you have on the screen right there, there's that middle area and it has a one-acre tree canopy up in the north and then it has a point seven three tree canopy and then the point eight for the open space at the bottom. Are those all mashed together or are those laid out as their distinct locations for that type of preservation?
For the determination of the calculation?
Yeah, so is the tree canopy, is that that section up there and then lowers the rest of the tree canopy and then the open space is that area to the bottom?
Um, I believe so. That might be a question that the applicant can speak, speak to a little bit better than me, but yes, I believe that they are distinct areas, kind of all parts of one whole though.
Okay, I'll ask.
And then also the street tree can also be contributing to the tree kind of requirement.
My other question was on the public alleyway on the north side of the property with the townhomes and it, there's a twenty-five foot road there and the right of way for an alley is twenty feet. So then it would be another, was it twelve? I did the calculation somewhere. It's measured from the middle, right? So that's like another twelve feet off the road and it looks like it, some of those are built really close to that, the right of way for the road up there. That one at the closest to the road, would that, does that sort of look like it's in the right of way?
Closest to Ackerman Road or to the alley?
The, the, the two that are together. So you've got your twenty-five feet, but then you've got twenty foot of buffer even from the center is thirty-two some feet, so another ten feet. It's tight up there. Do we typically build that close to the right of way?
So I'll let Ashley chime back in on the buffer piece, but as far as the alleys, our public alley right of way is twenty-five feet. So the pavement width itself is twenty feet within the public alley, but the required right of way is twenty-five feet, which is the dimension that they're showing. It's a little hard to see the difference, I guess, at the master plan, whether that's right of way or the pavement width, but the twenty-five feet would be the right of way width.
From the center and out. Is that not how it's measured? I might be wrong. I thought the right of way was measured from the center of the road, like, doesn't know how it worked.
So I mean, you can, you could kind of look at it either way, I suppose, but the total, if you look at our typical section, the total right of way for the alley would be twenty-five feet from, from edge to edge. It's twenty, twenty feet from edge of pavement to edge of pavement, twenty-five feet for the total right of way width for an alley. Does that make sense? I feel like I didn't answer your question.
If the right, the right of way shouldn't be smaller than the road.
No, the pavement width is twenty feet total. The, the right of way width is twenty-five.
This includes the right of way.
Right. The twenty-five foot dimension that they're showing is the right of way of the public alley.
Then, it's worded differently in the bottom section where it says fifty feet right of way and twenty-nine curved to curve. So it's just different. So it's, that confused me because it was not the same.
It is a little confusing and I think some of it is figuring out how much level of detail to put on the, the master plan. When you see it at the site plan level, you, you can see the differences a little better. But yeah, there's a lot less difference between the pavement width and right of way width in an alley than there is in a street because we don't have the sidewalk and everything that you would have on a, on a larger street section.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Counsel, you want to hear from the applicant at this time?
This is Mayor Marshburn, members of council, Peter Kossen, two-twenty-one North Salem Street in Apex. Our firm is the civil engineering consultant for Construction Masters. Thank you, Ashley, for your presentation. It was very thorough, so I'll be brief. This is more or less a, a smaller site that is nestled between two existing developments as well as Ackerman Road to the north. So we've tried to modify and create our zoning conditions really to match existing community. So it was, it, it provides a good fit. We've got the higher density along Ackerman Road and as Ashley mentioned, there's a stream buffer that basically bisects the, the property itself, which lends itself to a higher density to the north on Ackerman as well as the, a single-family to the south, again nestled between the two existing subdivisions to the east and to the west. So with that, I'm really here to answer any questions you may have and thank you.
Okay. I'll start at to my left. Any questions here? Mr. Matthews, Mr. Singleton?
Your conditions say there'll be no more than ten single-family in twenty-four townhomes according to what we have in front of us. And I know this is, uh, looking at rezoning. We're showing nine single-family and twenty-two townhomes, but that can be changed because the conditions are different, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Barron, do you have anything? Mr. Vance? Mr. Dill?
Yeah, I want to revisit the question on the, the tree canopy preservation area and the open space area. And I'm trying to understand that the tree canopy, these labels on here are labeled relative to what they're preserving. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So my question on the open space is according to UDO eight-four-two-A-four, it, for the purposes of the section, open space is private and legally and practically accessible to the residents of the subdivision or development it is designed to serve. Already a stretch for open space typically is open space and not wooded space. So the question is, how is this legally and practically accessible to the residents of the subdivision in that top bottom corner behind the storm retention pond?
Well, there'll be, there'll be access to the stormwater pond by an easement, which we could also make an access easement for the pedestrian to basically, because you've got to provide access to the pond for maintenance. So with that easement, it could also double as pedestrian access to, to get down to that open space for view or for observation or for, or for walking.
It's not open space. Actual, it's not open space, it's wooded space.
It is wooded space, yes, but it's still considered open space.
The report, it also mentions there are no floodplains and, but there are buffered stream and wetlands that run through the site. Are, are there designated wetlands on this property and who determined that? Was that Army Corps or, because there's a road going through this stream buffer. So I'm trying to understand what the restrictions are on that stream. Is there a stream there or?
There, there is a creek that runs through the property. It has been reviewed by the state and it was considered to be a buffered stream. So we have, have shown the fifty-foot buffers that are required on either, either side of the center line of that creek.
And it says that there are wetlands that run through the site. Where are the wetlands designated and who designated them?
The wet, the wetlands are basically confined to the, to the buffer, which is a hundred feet in total width, fifty feet from the center line of each. Those, the, the wetlands themselves were reviewed by an environmental consultant and then they get also observed by the Corps for confirmation.
So the wetlands are only on the southern part or there are wetlands on that northern part? It's hard to tell with the gradation on here.
I believe they were confined to the creek to the south of our road connection with Stream Engine Way.
The wetlands stop right where the road goes across.
If I recall correctly, they don't even extend that far. They're more confined to the south. Closer, closer to where the stormwater pond is located.
No, so the stormwater pond wasn't affecting the wetlands either?
That's correct.
Okay.
It, the stormwater pond, it has to be located outside of the stream buffer.
Okay. Thank you. I would remind counsel that this matter will go to the, it's scheduled to go to the planning commission. You'll have another chance if you need to ask further questions. Thanks, sir. Anybody else from the applicant here to testify? So if there's not, as. Yeah, that's what I'm asking now, yeah. Other than the applicant, if you're here and wish to speak on this matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address, if you would please, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Allman. My wife Tammy, my son Michael. My neighbors Joe, excuse me, Ed and Charity Jones, nineteen fifty-five Ackerman, are working some very long shifts for the postal service during Santa's very busy season and are trying to, to be Santa's helpers so they cannot attend tonight. They concur with what I was going to present tonight. We lived at nineteen thirty-one Ackerman Road, which is directly across from nineteen thirty-two, the property in question, for twenty-three years come January. We've had a lot of new friends and neighbors and have enjoyed them. As home owners who can be dramatically affected by the council's decision, we're here to urge the council to reject this rezoning request for several reasons I'll concisely explain. Our opposition is primarily not exclusively focused on the requested change to such a high-density level, specifically the townhomes, the MF one designation that is north of the canopy area and south of Ackerman Road on your maps. First, the new owner developer is asking for a radical change in the zoning from what we know is R forty or RA to MF one in townhomes and is wanting to put twenty-four of them in this tight space. This is far from a modest shift in zoning that is being requested. Unlike other new townhomes, such as at the corner of Ackerman and Hebram, a busy intersection, nineteen thirty-two is surrounded by single-family homes. MF one is completely out of character for the neighborhood and I believe that Garner's own description of MS, MF one illustrates this. The one I was able to find, they are so designated, this is a quote, "designed construction, constructed and maintained so they do not detract from the quality of the neighborhood as a place for healthful, quiet, aesthetically pleasing residential living. These districts may also provide a transition between the single-family districts and other districts," end of quote. MF one is being sought by the developer for a clear reason, to maximize the number of homes they can place here. We understand that, that's their motivation, their role. The council's role is different, however. It's, should be expected to reject those requests that are extreme, don't fit with the neighborhood or inconsistent with the natural surroundings. And now about natural surroundings, as it may relate to traffic and safety, I'm not the expert, of course, the maps you have don't illustrate the natural flow of the land and the road here, Ackerman specifically. of the land and the road here, uh, Ackerman specifically. Those not local to the area wouldn't know about the hill and the dip that every driver experiences going by here. Uh, when welcoming us to the neighborhood in two thousand, the former owners, um, Joe and Carolyn Pleasants described the hill-dip scenario as risking their life every time they try to pull out of their driveway. Uh, I imagine many pa- drivers passing in have probably felt the same, um, I know we certainly have, and I want to be clear on where this hill is, which is right along the eastern, uh, border, uh, eastern edge of the, uh, Bingham Station property line on the, the lower portion of Ackerman Road, that's the, the hill's crest. The dip is at the lowest point at the eastern edge of my property, uh, nineteen-thirty-one Ackerman, where a very important creek that hasn't been mentioned yet or shown up on your map, but is on the floodplains map, um, that I want to talk about in just a minute, that creek crosses the road right there. Uh, now, we might be happy for you to put up a caution hidden drive sign, um, and we are thankful for you or the town, whoever may have done it, that, that reduced the speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour. It's helped a little bit, thank you. Um, but none of these things nor widening or reworking this road is going to change the fact that this is simply an awful location to add twenty-four to forty-eight vehicles, assuming maybe two per house, possibly more, entering and leaving Ackerman every day at this dip area. Uh, last not least, I want to draw your attention to the small creek, and I'm not talking about the tree canopy area, I'm sorry, I don't have anything better, but the floodplain map on the Garner Planning page shows this creek that I'm going to talk about that's running right under the road here. Sorry, I don't have a blown-up copy of it. Um, this flows under Ackerman Road. I mentioned earlier the dip where the creek resides. It's the lowest point with the elevation constantly rising all the way to, toward Hebrim Church Road. This becomes a gushing creek during per- periods of constant or heavy rain, which we've had a lot of in the past ten years or so. Uh, it, flowing into nineteen-thirty-two Ackerman along the eastern property line, uh, of its eastern property line, this creek has existed as a natural area, a wetland, for decades, and that, uh, just happened to be natural area that wetlands. Along the area are older-growth trees that contribute to the neighborhood beauty, serve to weaken the damaging winds, and provide refuge for our local wildlife. Yes, we still have a little local wildlife. This natural creek deserves every protection as well. So, summing up, it's our hope the council will recognize the absurd, absurdity of such an extreme request in this case, going from one home on beautiful acreage to shoehorning in dense housing at the worst type of location for it, affecting many existing homeowners, pedestrians, and all drivers. This is not an intersection, a transition, or a similarly zoned area where MF-one can achieve this satisfactory relationship with surrounding properties that I saw in, in the thing. It's a single-family home blessed by natural streams, so we urge the council to reject this and, until there's a better plan. And unless you have questions for me, I will thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. And you understand the council will not be making the final decision tonight, it'll be referred to the planning commission.
I was curious, maybe, uh, maybe others are curious, how that works from here, sir? It refers to the planning commission and?
Yeah, yeah, by procedure, uh, after this hearing, the matter is referred to the planning commission for, uh, a hearing and plan consistency review, and then they will make a recommendation from their hearing back to the council, and this matter will come back before the council at a future date. Usually, what, within sixty days or less? I think, yeah.
I'd save y'all a little time to go to them first, I guess, but that's not the way it's done, so, thank you very much.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay. Anybody else here to, uh, speak, uh, on this matter?
Hello, thank you, everyone, my name is Shonda Littleton, I live in an adjacent neighborhood to this proposed plan that's before you. As my neighbor stated, I echo everything that he has stated. Um, personally, when I became a homeowner in this area, we were promised some things, but of course, we know that promises can be broken, and, um, interesting choice of words, that this is going to be nestled between, um, some neighboring neighborhoods, we're feeling like it's going to be crammed, and there is a big difference in that because that area is already heavily utilized with the homes that are currently in the area, and this is going to impact us that have been there for fifteen-plus years already. So, definitely, we thank you for your time, I thank you for your time. Um, definitely interested to see how this goes forward, and, um, again, um, we are very concerned about this as homeowners in that area.
I ask Ms. Littleton a question. You said you lived in the neigh- you live in Bingham Station?
Yes, I do, sir.
On Steam Engine Way?
I live on Still Harper Way.
Okay. Close enough?
Close enough.
Got you, okay.
I live, I live on, um, I'm right in the cul-de-sac of one-twenty-five.
Give us, give us your name, please.
My name is Denise Loops, I'm on, um, one-twenty-five Wagon Thailand, so I'm right at the, um, in the cul-de-sac that Steam Engine Way crosses, and so, in that area. On our side of the street off of, um, from Belfair and Ackerman Street, we're already experiencing within our neighborhood traffic flow problems due to short driveways, um, not wide enough driveways to accommodate two cars, um, and so, there's a lot of parking on the street that's taking place, and so, adding more units on to Steam Engine Way that would be exiting and entering in that, um, area is a concern for us especially, um, because we're already having those, um, issues currently. So, that's why I'm here today.
Okay.
Yeah, for traffic flow, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Anybody else, I'm about ready to close the hearing.
Hi, good evening, my name is Angie Brady, and, um, I'm on one-eighty Steam Engine Way. I'm at the, the dead end, I guess it is right now, uh, where the creek comes down. My concern, uh, I moved out in this area two thousand and six, I built my house near KB Homes told me that this area would never be developed because it was a buffer zone. I know there's changes and ways around it, but that's just what I was told when I got that lot. Uh, my other concerns is obviously traffic, um, heavy congestion. Um, and I echo what these folks say, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For taking your time to come out. Okay. I think I've heard from everybody now at this time, was there, okay, ma'am, I'll hear from you.
Hi, I'm Marcel Gonzalez, I live in Belfair Drive, and I'm, I'm also against this new addition because of traffic, guest parking on our road, and it's just, it will give easy access to recent criminal activity we have experienced in our neighborhood, so we just have the safety concerned.
What was that street you lived on again, ma'am?
I didn't get any.
Belfair Drive, leading into Steam Engine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, all right. Okay, uh, council, I would remind you of the, um, expected action as relates to this matter, referring to the planning commission, so, uh, I'm going to close the, um, public hearing at this time, and, uh, if you have any further discussion, now would be the time to do it, but, uh, a motion is in order.
I have a question for the town attorney and related to this project and the development agreement, and it was stated that this project wouldn't contribute to that because it didn't have a TIA. Is that going to be the case for any project in the impact area that doesn't have a TIA?
So, if the project does have a TIA that shows that it would contribute to that intersection, then it would be subject to the cost sharing in the development agreement. Other than that, there is a carve-out for the town engineer and the planning director to determine whether some other type of project that doesn't meet the UDO's requirements for a TIA might also contribute, uh, and then, those could be brought in, but my understanding is based on the, the low number of units in this, uh, and the number of trips that would be generated from this proposal, that it would not have, it would have a de minimis impact on that intersection.
Ten of these down there would have a cumulative effect.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. A curiosity question, uh, this, uh, cul-de-sac and the connection to the two existing neighborhoods. On, uh, Steam Engine Way, it says it's going to be twenty-nine foot back-to-back curb. On Hazy Hills Lane, it's thirty-two foot back-to-back curb. I'm assuming it's different because it's going to match up to what's there. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case, yes, and I would like to note that both Steam Engine Way and Hazy Hill Lanes are currently out of compliance with the UDO, um, their current street's length is over two-hundred feet, um, so they would be required to connect to get into compliance with the UDO, so this project would bring both of those into compliance.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, while Ms. Harris is still there? Do you have one, Mr. Vance?
Yes, before the motion is made, just want to be clear to the public that, uh, no decision will be made by the council on this particular, uh, issue tonight, it's just being forwarded, possibly forwarded to the planning commission for further consideration and plan consistency, that's it.
Thanks, sir. Okay.
This plan is a good example of that some land doesn't need to develop, it just needs to sit there and hold the world together. Phew, this is ram and cram, I've mentioned ram and cram before, good Lord have mercy, the top half of this is just horrible. Sorry, it's just horrible.
All right, any other comments?
I'll take the motion, go to planning commission, we'll let them go through it and see what they think, they think it's as bad as I do. Maybe we forward it to the planning commission.
Second. Any motions probably before us at this time, I believe, with the motion second?
I do have a comment, I have a motion in the second, I would like, yeah, just, there's the precedent setting of this type of density down here, and it also not accounting, the traffic not being accounted for, there's a lot of infill, uh, opportunities down there, and this would be a very bad precedent for that, so, that's my comment for planning commission.
One other thing, in reference to it going to the planning commission, do we have an idea of the timeframe that it goes to the planning commission, just in case some of the individuals in the public who are not familiar with the process may want to sit in and see what the planning commission does? Do we have an idea?
I think planning can tell us that.
Yes, i- if you choose to recommend it, it will go January ninth.
January ninth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, before the planning commission, okay.
Second Monday of the month.
Second Monday of the month, seven P.M., same place, it's here.
Okay, thank you, sir, well-stated. All right, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and, uh, call for a motion from council at this time.
We did.
Oh, excuse me, okay, you're right, I'm sorry. I had a comment over here, you're right, we're ready to vote. Okay, all in favor of a motion to refer this to the planning commission, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no?
No.
Okay, it's noted that the motion carries on a vote of four to one, so, um, thank you very much, and we'll hear back when it's ripe for the council. Thank you all for those who, uh, took the time to come out this evening. You understand when the next hearing will be, right?
Anywhere in the morning.
Yep.
We should be here, yeah.
Yes, all right. Okay, thank you, um, so, the next item is a, um, item five under public hearings, uh, zoning text amendment, ZTA twenty-two zero-two, public notice requirements. Uh, you doing that, Mr. Bowie, or is Mr. Treesenberg? This also is a matter, as I understand it, after the hearing, that would be proper to refer to the, uh, planning commission for consistency review and recommendation, am I correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't do it properly, I just, we're talking. Yeah. I don't know what that was.
Just wrapping you up.
All right, good evening again. Apologize, you think you'd sign into one Word program or one Microsoft program that would have you logged into all of them. Um, so, I do have both, uh, what's in your staff report, uh, tonight, as well as I do have the one from our September work session as well, um, but just taking some guidance from that work session on the twenty-seventh, um, we have worked to put together, uh, some modifications to the public notice requirements for your consideration, um, and so, that does include, uh, basically to summarize, a first-class mailing radius of five-hundred feet, um, that notification would be to the address of the property itself, as well as to the property owner address, um, so, in that case is where we do have an out-of-state owner, the resident will also, uh, get a notice, and that, uh, also that the applicant, uh, bear the responsibility of supplying staff with the postage-paid address envelopes, um, to provide those to the staff for mailing, um, so while that doesn't eliminate the time to, um, that we'll need to have to, you know, stuff the envelopes and get them actually, um, sealed into the post office, it does, uh, at least divert some of that cost for both postage and for the envelopes themselves. Um, that has been a, a substantial, uh, change, um, given what we have currently, um, staff has noticed a very, a very large, uh, number of envelopes that we're having, that we are going through for that. Um, so, we have the current text then in section two of the staff report, and then, um, a, an edited version in section three, so new language in red, um, existing language in strike-through, um, so again, proposal here, we would change C-one potentially, um, again, to all owners of property, I would add the word a budding, um, just because that is in the, uh, state language as well, um, sometimes you could have, I guess, a property that might not meet the radius requirement, but would still be a budding, uh, for some reason, though, that's what they do, so it's probably better just to have that in there. Um, but then, to be clear, though, that when less than an entire parcel of land is subject to the application, which we get sometimes, for example, we just had the Burnett Farms case, um, that was a small portion of a very large tract, um, it is, you are responsible for, for notifying the original parcel, it's not just the, the sub, the sub-piece. Um, number two, just clarifies again, using the property location address, that is the specific term that they use within the tax records, um, for, for the address of the property, that's what we would compare against the owner mailing address, uh, so again, if those are different, we would notify that property location address as well. Sections three, four, and five do not change, and then, we would propose adding a subsection six, that the applicant shall be responsible for providing the planning director with first-class stamped envelopes, um, postage metering not acceptable, that you have to be stamped, uh, because the metering could change. Uh, address to all mailed notice recipients required by this subsection. Um, so again, just as with zoning map amendments, uh, this would go to the planning commission for their review and approval, it would come back to you again for a finding on reasonableness, uh, so this now works identical, um, to the map amendment process, um, and that's really all that I have, it was pretty, pretty straightforward with the, uh, the language changes that were going to be needed to do that. I will bring up, um, just also the previous, uh, memo that we did, ah, it's going to prompt me to do this again, um, I will work on getting that up, I will go ahead and entertain questions while I'm typing that information.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, and, uh, I, I think you mentioned, or somebody did, this was, this was, uh, discussed and brought forward from our September twenty-seven work session, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, all right, uh, council questions for Mr. Treesenberg, uh, Ms. Behringer, do you have any?
I do have one, um, I was a participant in the Uni- Unified Development Ordinance Update, uh, committee, and, um, I, I do not remember the committee discussing the thousand feet notification requirement. Do you, Mr. Treesenberg, do you have, uh, notes or anything that, that indicates when we discussed it and asked for it to be included?
Right. Right. So it was near the end of the process in either, somewhere in the February to April timeframe, when that was, was talked about, but it was, we were still doing mostly teams' meetings at that time. So that it was mentioned, but there was not anybody. It's kind of one of those things where you pop up the slide, see if anybody's got anything to say. At the time, there wasn't. So prior to that, it still had the old 300-foot rule with, if any part of a subdivision is impacted by the 300-foot rule, then the whole subdivision. And we talked about in the cases of subdivisions like Heather Hills, that's a huge area. I mean, that's not just 1,000 feet. That's, in places, could be up to three-quarters of a mile or more. So we, we wanted to put something in there that was very easy to determine. And like I say, we had talked about as much as a quarter-mile at one point in time. We just tried to simplify that a little further by saying 1,000 feet. Yeah. But here is the table, in case anyone wanted to familiarize themselves with that again, of what our surrounding jurisdictions are dealing.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Treesenberg? Mr. Matthews, Mr. Singleton?
Reason we, we, staff came back with 500 feet was, that's common for several other, several of the other towns in the area. And our 300 was one of the lower ones, but the 500 is because it's, one, two, three, that's at least four that have that. So that's why you came back with that number. Okay, all right. Thank you.
We're, and like I say, we're, we're fine with anything, just we want it to be easy to administer.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anything here? Question?
To summarize the changes, the decrease from 1,000 to 500 feet and will not notify tenants any longer.
In apartment complexes, but what we-
That's a huge difference then. And we did talk about that. I was on the U D O rewrite committee.
Right.
We talked about that extensively and with the number of new rental apartments, projects, rental homes, all this stuff, it was exclusionary to not get the input of those people who are residents and pay taxes and all that other stuff. That was the conversation we had. We also had multiple public hearings on the U D O rewrite as it came back and it's, didn't come up. I think the change on the tenant thing is very, very problematic because it is, it basically says if you don't own property, you don't deserve to hear about what's happening around you. And I'm not sure that rewrite is necessary. I don't think it accomplishes the mission of what the notification area is, which is to notify people who live near something that something's going to happen. I would propose even now that we remove that section C where it says notify owners of property and retain the owners and tenants' language that was vetted by the committee and multiple public hearings.
Okay, Mr. Vance, do you have any questions, comments?
I have no comments at this time.
You're finished. I'll, I'll recognize any persons from the audience, this is a public hearing, if you care, if you came to comment on this matter, now would be a time to let the chair know. Please come to the podium, take your name.
My name is Kathleen Danherdakardanas and I live at 1609 South Wade Avenue. I also have two other properties in Garner. I heard about this because I received the town news emails that give us updates, but I sent a message out to Nextdoor saying, does anybody really know what's happening on December 20th, right before the holidays? I came here in between a church party and getting all kinds of other things ready for, for the holidays. I think the goal is to keep us informed as residents, whether we be owners or renters. In my job, I consider informing my renters and supporting my renters because they're part of our community. So I completely agree with what Damian said, that renters as well as owners should be notified of things. And I'm just very concerned, as were all of the people that responded to me when I posted this on Nextdoor, that when we limit the number of people that are notified, especially we just saw in the last presentation, when we have increasingly dense communities being developed and we're letting fewer and fewer neighbors know, it creates more problems because someone that's a quarter of a mile away on Ackerman might be a quarter a mile away, but that's an hour of them sitting in traffic because of something that's created down the street that's right beyond their 500-meter or 500-foot buffer. So I just would encourage the thought that we need to, if we're going to maintain town of Garner environment and not multiplex city that's just trying to get more houses in, that we should consider maintaining our, our communication among neighbors so we can be a part of the educated and informed development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Was there anybody else who cared to make a comment? State your name and address if you will.
Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner. And I actually here tonight for another hearing and realized this was on the agenda when I picked up the agenda outside. So glad, glad I'm here. Appreciate the opportunity. I want to, ditto, one thing council member Behringer said. I also served on the committee, on the U D O committee. And it was skimmed over, talked about the radius at one point. There was never a consensus as far as changing it from the 300 feet. It was mentioned by the leader of the, guy who run the committee, I can't remember his name, that we'll come back and discuss this at a later date. As far as I know, I was on every single meeting that we had, teams meeting and otherwise. Never did I hear a discussion about 1,000, because it was a hot button for me. It was something that I brought up initially and I would have been in tune to it. And never again did it, did it come up that I see. So I was shocked that the committee did, never did really vote on it and put it in. And then I found out about it when we submitted for a project back in the summer, then all of a sudden it's 1,000 feet. So somehow it did get slid in there, I guess, and not sure exactly how that happened. I think, I appreciate the lady's comment on Nextdoor. There's someone in our office today who was making a comment about the Nextdoor in the comment. And that person in our office, what they did not realize is, at one point, it was 300 feet. It went to 1,000. Now we're going to 500. They were thinking there was never any notice notifications on or that it was 1,000 all along and getting taken back to 500. So I think there's a little bit of confusion out there as, as far as that goes. You know, there was a big concern on our committee about rental properties. And it really, you know, personally, I don't have, wouldn't have a issue with someone who lives in a rental house getting a notification. Where we felt like it was getting out of, out of hand is if you had an apartment complex. And that fell into the 1,000-foot and all of a sudden, you've got 900 to 1,000 renters in an apartment complex that we're having to write letters to, to go to an apartment complex. So usually folks are more transient in, in that regard. So I think the apartment complex issue was what was an issue with the committee. But again, I mean, I know we did talk about it in the committee, but we never, as a consensus, I mean, we all had various opinions, but no one ever agreed, yeah, it should go to all, all renters. So the concern I have is, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we had no notifications on. Maybe five years, definitely less than 10 years ago, there was no notification. And I was definitely a proponent of going to the notification process and letting folks know who are impacted what's going on. And it's been very beneficial. And so I was all for the three, the 300-foot. So I think it's, it's a great thing. If you start stretching it out too far, what happens is you take away the voice of the people who are actually impacted. And that, and that was, has been my concern. And so I appreciate to tell, you know, considering the 500-foot change based on what surrounding communities are doing. So appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Comment for me? We hashed all this out of the work session and give staff direction, which is brought back to us. And I can see the rehashing and these go to the planning board and let them do their due diligence and come back to us and if we got to do something, we can act upon it. So I'm prepared to make a motion to go ahead and refer that to the planning board and let them do what they got to do. Then we'll see what happens.
Let me officially close the public hearing. I, I'm trying to give everybody a chance. Yes, ma'am.
I apologize for not catching this earlier, but if you do want to notify occupants, I prefer that you use the word occupant. Renter or tenant denotes a contractual relationship, which may not cover everyone who is a resident. So to the extent that that comes back. And that's also, occupant is also a term that the postal service is, is used to using.
Okay.
You're saying the last line in number two should say, so that the occupant may be notified.
If you, if you intend where there are differences, where something is not owner-occupied, where the mailing address and the actual physical location would be the same, then you use occupant rather than renter.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and recognize Mr. Matthews, who desires to make a motion, I believe.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, regards to the Z T A dash 22 dash 02, public notice requirements, move that we refer this to the planning commission for consistency review and recommendations.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded by Mr. Vance or Mr. Singleton, but anyway. So council, the, the motion is properly before you this time. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Just one quick, one quick item, Mr. Mayor. If, if, you know, whatever's done, the change that, that the town took with the adoption of the U D O, only three towns or communities on here do notify, send, send mail to the occupant of the property if the owner is another address. So what Garner has done is similar to three others and what's being proposed is the same. So in that regard, the town is trying to make sure that occupants of the property, if it's rental property, are notified excluding the apartment dwellings, as noted here on the chart.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger, go ahead and speak, please.
Yeah, I'm trying to see, follow what Mr. Singleton is saying. So I don't see us on here, but the way that it has come back to us, the edit, in the original language said, mail notice shall be provided to all owners and tenants, and I guess occupants, abutting within, and then the feet. But now it's just changed to property owners. So now we're saying we don't want to notify residents if they're not property owners. And, right?
Well, it says clearly here, where tax records reflect the mailing address for owner of property to be different than the property location, then notifications will also be mailed to the property location address so that the change tenant to occupant may be notified.
That's different than, that's a different process, though. So that's putting the onus on the property owner to then notify the tenant. It says so that the tenant may be notified.
No, it says the notifications will also be mailed to the property location address of the property itself.
Right, that's different than an individual occupied unit. That's, that could be the address of the management company that owns all the units. It's, it's a very subtle difference and change, but it's very significant. There are people who, there are property owners that don't have the same address as the property. So this saying it'll go to both, but that doesn't mean it goes to everyone who's an occupant at that parcel. So this says if you're, it's an apartment complex, oh, we'll send it to the owner and we'll send it to that address. But it doesn't say that the occupants of that, of said development will necessarily get notified. It's pushing that bonus onto the property owner. That's why it says may be noted, so the tenants may be notified. Now that's on the, the owner to do that. The original language we had was very explicit and very simple because it said you're, if you're the owner or you're the occupant, you live at an address within 500 feet now, you will get a notice that something is happening near you. And that means every resident in Garner within 500 feet would get a notification.
I'm looking at the current text, just what's in our, what's provided to us, which is above that. And it says, when the tax records reflect the mailing address for owner of a property to be different than the address of the property owned, then notifications will also be mailed to the address of the property itself so that the tenant may be notified.
Right.
That's what is current, it is-
Right, but-
The property address, so it's similar to what, what has just been noted.
It's similar, but it's different. And it diff, the difference comes in the first section where what exists now says mailed notices shall be provided to all property owners and tenants occupants within 1,000 feet. That's been changed in the revision to take out the owners and tenants. And the number two you're talking about, again, if it, it, the owner may not live there, but it also doesn't say that the tenants are going to get a notification. They're not going to get a mailed notification. It's a, it, it's not the same. If it were the same, then just, if it's the same, let's say it's the same. And let's change number one back to mailed notices shall be provided to all owners and tenants occupants, abutting within 500 feet. So if they're the same, let's change the other one to reflect it. Because if they're not the same, then they're different. So if, that's your interpretation of that, let's change number one to say property owner and occupant.
Council members, uh-
Chart that was provided explicitly said that not apartment dwellings. And, and I said, and I said at the work session that, I think the people at the property, at the, uh, who were the individual tenants in a 300-unit apartment complex, you know, we don't let them notify them that the taxes are going to increase, the property owners, that their rent's going to increase. I think that would have more impact on them than what may, may or may not come down the street. I said that at, at the public hearing. Again, if you, we have a lot of rental houses in Garner, townhouses and so forth, and this would get one to every address, no matter who owns it, because I own rental property also and, in Raleigh. And I think the goal is to try to get as many people as we can, but do you need to send the 400-unit apartment complex that notice?
Yes.
That's the, that's the debate.
Yes, because they're residents. It's not us to, up, for us to judge whether or not, because they don't own property, whether or not they deserve to get notified.
I understand that. I didn't say that because most of people who are in, who are renting a house or neighbors for a road down here are going to get a notice based on what this is.
If you live in an apartment and we're building more and more apartments-
Gentlemen, I would remind you, we have people out there waiting for another very important hearing. You all know that this is, if it goes to the planning commission, as it properly should, you'll have a chance to de, debate these things again. You're taking excessive time, in my view. She has called for the question. I think the chair is, is required to ask for a vote on this matter. We have a motion properly before, said it go to the planning commission.
Mayor, the manager has his hand up.
Just, just one point I want to make, and, and I'm not weighing in on one argument or the other, but just to make sure everybody understands, this is just one form of notification for the public. There's also a sign at the property location and then also we post it on our website. So I'm just making that point that this is not the only form.
Oh, I may, thank you very much.
And Jeff can correct me if I'm incorrect, so.
Okay. Question has been called, so I'll ask council to vote on the motion made by Mr. Matthews to essentially refer this to the, to the planning commission.
Point of order, we have to vote on the motion to call the question. You can't call the question unilaterally. You have to call the question and there's a vote. There has to be a two-thirds majority to call, then call the question and then we can get to Mr. Matthews.
I don't have my Robert rules in front of me, but I'm not familiar with what you're saying, but we can, we can, we can ask if the council's ready to, to move on the motion. So if you favor hearing the question and voting on the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the chair declares that it passes. So now before you is the, is a, is a motion that was made by council member Matthews to refer this matter to the, okay. If you favor that motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you oppose that motion, would you vote no?
No.
Motion carries.
And I'm going to assume that'll be at the next meeting on January 9th.
I would think so. Is that right? Yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you all. We look forward to hearing back from you on that, on that item. It's a little past the time. We ordinarily would take a, a, a quick recess. Counsel, what say you? We have another item that's been waiting for some time.
Let me take a break.
Mr. Behringer says.
All right. It is by the clock on the wall, about six minutes past nine. I'll ask you to come back if you will, no later than 9:15 so we can take up- ask you to come back, if you will, no later than 9:15, so we can take up the other matter. I declare an adjournment until 9:15. Thank you for being back in. I declare we're back in open session. And I'm going to call item under new and old business, Tier Two Conditional Rezoning, CZMP 22032, the Everstead at White Oak. And I will recognize Mr. Reginald Bowie with our Planning Department for the presentation. Mr. Bowie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will, will be presenting the Everstead at White Oak Conditional Zoning, CZMP 2203. General case information, the applicant is David Phillips, LCD Acquisitions LLC, properties owned by Garner Land Company LLC. Location is Zero Timber Drive East. Track size is 45.38 acres. This is a Tier Two rezoning request with a master sketch plan and written conditions to re, conditionally rezone 45.38 acres from single-family residential R40, now residential R2, to master plan multifamily MF2 C260 conditional, to be adopted as multifamily A, MFA C260. For the development of a residential community, the site is located, again, at Zero Timber Drive East, and can be further identified as Wake County PIN number 1720820256. Zoning conditions have been proposed that restrict the range of MF2 permissible uses to one out of 21. Architecture and other conditions are also proposed. Here we have an aerial view of the, of the site. Adjacent zoning and land use. To the north is MFB Timber Drive East, townhomes and apartments. To the south is vacant, is the Jurgen Foundation Charitable Trust, rural agricultural. To the east is light industrial, Penske Truck Leasing. And to the west is MFB Abilis Solar Proposed MF2 C260. Here we have a permitted use table, household living, multifamily triplex or higher, including apartments. No more than 295 residential units, and associated amenities shall be constructed on the property. They have 13 zoning conditions. I will not go over each one of those, but I will point All buildings, number 10, all buildings should have a minimum 12-inch roof overhang Number 15, subject to a determination by Go Raleigh at the time of site plan review, the developer shall provide up to one transit easement on each side of Timber Drive to accommodate bus transit. Compliance with this commitment shall not require the dedication of a transit easement if Go Raleigh does not request one at time of initial site plan approval. Number 16, subject to a determination by NC DOT at time of site plan review, the developer shall provide at least one at-grade pedestrian crossing across Timber Drive to facilitate walkability. Compliance with this commitment shall not require a pedestrian crossing to be installed by the developer if NC DOT does not allow one, does not allow one at the time of initial site plan approval. Number 17, subject to approval by Duke Energy at the time of site plan review, the developer shall install signage within the overhead transmission line easement to promote safety. Compliance with this commitment shall not require such signage to be installed by the developer if Duke Energy does not approve signage at the time of initial site plan approval. Number 18, there should be a minimum of at least one operable window per each habitable floor of each townhome style multifamily unit. At this time, going to bring forth Mr. Treeson Bird to discuss the master plan.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, those highlighted conditions were things that the applicant did propose to change after meeting with the Planning Commission. So those were the updates since you saw this the very first time. So again, you have, just to refamiliarize yourself with their proposed master plan, it is just over 45 acres with a proposed maximum density of six and a half dwelling units per acre. These would all be private drive systems in here. So two points of private access off of Timber Drive into both sides of the proposed development. You have a, a very small scale, is I guess how I'll, I'll say it, a small scaled apartment that consists of both single-unit type dwellings and paired cottage dwellings. The paired cottages would be very similar, I think, probably to what we saw over in Auburn Village. Over here, we have a townhouse style apartment proposal. So again, they look very much like townhomes, but again, will be rental. You have the transmission line that Mr. Bowie mentioned, oops, I'm sorry, cutting through the middle of the site here. That would be used as much as it can be allowed by Duke Energy for recreational purposes, as well as to support some additional parking. And of course, Timber Drive would be extended through the property and stubbed further south, getting us a little closer back to White Oak Road in the vicinity of I-40. So when we took this to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission spent some time talking about plan consistency. We do have some additional notes in the staff report that were added as some additional discussion. At the end of the day, the Planning Commission did ultimately vote to go with the consistency. We actually gave them a couple of options on this. But their, their consistency statement was that the site of the request is designated as mixed-density neighborhood center, which may include a mix of residential densities with incidental commercial uses integrated within a community and can be adjacent to the town center category or on the periphery of established mixed-use areas. The proposed use of townhomes, single-family and apartments in prox, or, sorry, the proposed use of, they should say, townhome style, single-family style apartments in proximity to existing commercial development of White Oak Shopping Center can be considered consistent with the mixed-density neighborhood center land use designation. So they did, they did support a finding of consistency. Again, this is the, that mixed-density neighborhood center category. We did have the timber apartments just to the north and timber townhomes that were approved maybe a year or so ago, with also that same designation. The transportation plan, again, with Timber Drive East being a four-lane divided roadway. Originally, the thought was with connection to South Greenfield Parkway, of course. In going through the southeast area study process, we know now that that is not going to be physically possible without some major rework. So we are now working with Campo to have that Timber Drive East realigned to White Oak. So this project, though, would, would complete Timber Drive East and extend it with its full cross-section. The site is also situated along a future planned fixed transit service route. So with that realignment to, to White Oak further to the south, the updated version of the transportation plan did identify this potentially as a, kind of a transit circulator along Timber and White Oak. So therefore, the applicant has proffered that condition to include transit easements. Go Raleigh will take a look at that once we get a little further along in the planning process to determine the need based on their spacing requirements. Currently, they do have spaces provided just to the north of this site, but I have a feeling there will be, there will be a request for spaces here as well. So with those improvements, this project can be considered consistent with the transportation plan. There are no greenway corridors or dedicated parkland search areas in this immediate vicinity. So as such, they determined the plan can be considered consistent with the parks' master plan as well. Just again, items that were discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, the alignment of Timber Drive East going southward. So we talked about how the southeast area study and working with Campo, those things are being addressed. There were some questions about pedestrian movement and some clarifications by the applicant to those. Questions about architectural details, such as the overhangs and fenestration. So there, I will point out that the applicant did offer to increase the overhangs to 12 inches on recommendation from the Planning Commission, and also to add in the windows on the sides, per their recommendation. They also talked about the Duke Energy easement, and just clarifying again what uses were being proposed. Again, those that are recreational, passive recreation and parking would be permitted by Duke Energy. There was questions about the artificial turf for the enclosed backyards, and then some questions on just how maintenance would be handled, and again, focusing on the role of the property owner as the, as the rental agent. So at the end of the meeting, on a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission did move to accept staff's consistency statement on consistency and recommended approval to you. And so again, that statement there. And we are back here now for your findings on reasonableness. Staff would note that in addition to those findings of plan consistency, or even with a finding of plan inconsistency, there are a couple of things that might also support a motion to approve the future land use plans designation of tracks to the south. The future land use plans designation of tracks to the south of here are medium density, so two and a half to five dwelling units per acre. So this project would provide a downward transition from the density of the garden-style apartments to the north, so both in terms of density, massing and scale potentially. Also, the project does complete about a third of the remaining one-mile segment of Timber Drive East to getting it back to White Oak Road when it would be functionally complete. So we do have, again, both are recommended for both approving or denying, being options one and two. Your motion worksheet begins on page 163. Again, the applicant is here if you would like to hear from them. Staff will also be available to answer any additional questions, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Trezenberg, I appreciate that. Since this is not a public hearing, we are not required to call any witnesses at this time. I'll hear briefly from the applicant if you want to make a comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Lager. Appreciate the opportunity to be back here. I don't have anything to add, honestly. I think Jeff and his staff have done a good job of poring through the details associated with this case. Our team is here to answer any questions that you all may have. I do want to note one thing before I hand it back to you, and that is that the Timber Drive extension is an important piece of this puzzle. You know, that is, based on the pro forma that my client has prepared associated with this, and this is a project cost that they're absorbing entirely, that's roughly a $3.5 million improvement, all told. And that could theoretically be more if somebody other than the developer of this project has to foot that cost. So I did want to note that in terms of, you know, what you try to look for in zoning cases is not only does it fit, is it reasonable? But also, is there some public benefit that's coming out of it? We think that's a significant benefit to the taxpayers of the town of Garner. So with that, happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any question for this gentleman, anybody? Okay, none at this point? Okay, Counsel, the matter is properly before you. I will hear from Counsel if you desire to discuss this matter briefly before I call for a motion. Anybody want to make any... I recognize you, sir.
Now that everyone has presented all information, I do have some questions and observations. One is that this project has... Where's Mr. Trezenberg? I have a questions for you. They'll be directed to you. This project has been different every time it's come and been presented to Counsel or to Planning Commission and then back to Counsel. When it came to us the first time, it didn't have the single-family designation. When it went to Planning Commission, it did. Then it came back to us and it did, and then they said, no, it wasn't supposed to. And now it doesn't have it, but it has multifamily. And I see references to townhomes, which I understand what that is in the project. And then I see a reference to apartments. And I'm not understanding where in the UDO, those properties on the north part are apartments, these single-family detached units. I've read both versions of the UDO, and neither one ever indicates that single-family detached units are considered apartments. And they're only considered multifamily in a cluster development, which this is not. So can you explain how a single-family home is an apartment, not building code or UDO?
So it's not on a separately dedicated subdivided lot. So when these types of products first started coming to us several years ago, you know, jurisdictions everywhere were trying to figure out how they should be classified. So in some cases where there's not a, where it's not completely 100% clear, you have to also then pick what is most closely aligned to it. So since these are not proposing individual lot lines where you're having to deal with setbacks and things like that, you have, the closest thing that they represent is a multifamily-type structure. We had a case just next to here, actually, with the Salt Hill Road project, where they had an existing house rather than tear it down. They proposed to keep it as a rental unit. So there, again, we treated that as an apartment building for purposes of the orientation and setbacks.
A single home can be, what you've just described, a single home could be rezoned as a multifamily piece of property, even though it's a single unit, single-family detached home?
If it's part of a multistructure-type situation.
This doesn't pass the sniff test at a multifamily rezoning, which is also supposed to be higher density, and not explicitly indicated as an apartment. The definition of apartment in the UDO is three or more units. And that's the definition that we have to go with, with what an apartment is, and I don't see that here. So the zoning doesn't really work for me personally because it's supposed to be a higher density. That's the purpose of a multifamily, and particularly in an area that has no road constraints. Traffic-wise, higher density is warranted and possible in this location. That's my call. Let anyone else go. Mr. Mayor, I've got a few other questions, but...
Anything down here?
I've got a comment if I might, Mr. Mayor. This thing's been before two or three times, and every time it's come up here, something's got picked up and they've done everything we've asked them to do. They truly have. It's a fine project. I like the thing where we've got the separation of units, single level for seniors. Some of us up here are senior and appreciate getting away from those stairs, and who knows where, you know, we need that. We've got hospitals being built, we've got a veterans hospital, we've got a Duke facility, we're going to have a Wake Med facility. All these people are going to need places to stay, and this is right in close proximity. I think it's an excellent project, and, you know, and the planning board's been six to zero on everything and recommended approval, the staff's recommended approval. And I'm, you know, I'm ready to recommend approval too, so that's just my thoughts.
Okay, let me hear from other counsel first. Mr. Vance, anything?
Yes, in reference to this type of project, where else have you... This is more to the applicant. Where else have you developed a project like this?
David Phillips with Landmark Properties, 349 Haskell Road, Atlanta, Georgia 30309. So Landmark has been in business since 2004, based in Athens, Georgia. We started off building smaller properties in the Columbia, South Carolina, Athens, Georgia market in 2004, and then we expanded those. Since then, we've built more than 50,000 units around the country from California, Washington, Texas, Pennsylvania, New York, all over the place. So a lot of our projects in the past have historically been geared more towards students, college students and grad students, and university-focused housing is what we call it. But we branched out into this a couple of years ago, and we're starting to roll out communities. We've got one delivering in a couple of months in Huntsville, Alabama. We have another one delivering in Houston, Spring, Texas, just outside of Houston. So if you go to our website, you can see the quality of the products that we build and the scale of the projects we build.
I heard you mentioned there was a place up in North Carolina.
Yes, sir, there's Standard Raleigh, it's student housing development, and it's more of an urban deal. It's four or five stories tall, so it's a little bit different than this. And I think there's also the station in Raleigh, which I was not the developer on the station, so I'm not as familiar with it. My company has, like, eight of me, so it was one of my counterparts that developed that property.
It's student housing, but not senior housing?
Correct. It's not senior housing, but as you can imagine, managing college students is 10 times more difficult than managing seniors.
So this would be unique for the area?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything, Mr. Barringer? Mr. Singleton?
I've got a follow-up question with Mr. Dillinger. He got my cue rushed, Mr. Trezenberg. The house on Salt Hill Road, it's a single-family home, but it's owned multifamily. Now, I know we've had issues over the years where people will complain, there's six, eight cars in a driveway, too many people living in the house, but they're all related. But based on this being multifamily, different families can live in the house, right?
So they're maintaining it as a single unit, so it's a one-unit building. So we would still apply the dwelling unit to that.
But it's owned multifamily, can't multiple families live there? I mean, it sounds like we're splitting hairs, but...
Then you could say that for an apartment unit too, could multi... But there's still that definition of who can be in a single unit.
You can put two front doors and put a wall down the middle, but anyway, I'm just splitting hairs here.
Right, they could, but there would be... Yeah, there would be side implications for that, though, too, because they would have to have, you know, the parking. Like, we had to look at the parking and the landscaping and all that. There were adjustments they had to make to that, that single-family house to do that. But again, we treated it as a, just like any of the other buildings, just one unit inside of it.
One apartment, it's a free-standing one apartment.
Right, right. I'll admit, if we had a purely form-based code, it would make it easier in that respect when it comes to this kind of thing because we would then just be looking at the form. But because we're not purely form-based, we're still use-based. And again, we have it happen more often than I would care that we have to make, okay, this doesn't fit this definition to a T, but it's closer to this than it is to this.
Intent is there. Okay, thank you.
A follow-up to that question. You said it, you just said it doesn't fit. You just said it doesn't fit what we have.
Yeah, it doesn't fit to a T, any specific definition.
So the concern is that this is precedent-setting. For now, single-family apartments, which is not how apartments are defined in our UDO, is that correct? Apartments are defined as three or more units in the old version of the UDO, correct?
So it says triplex, quadplex, including apartments.
More than two, because two is duplex and townhome, fall into that category. But apartment is never a single unit in our UDO.
And again, that was a determination we had to say, what is it most like? And that's what we determined it was most like. We've had proposals for cottage-style developments, and again, we don't have anything that really fits that to a T, but they're more like apartments than they are a single-family with dwellings.
More like a single-family when you're talking about traffic generation, when you're talking about all these other things. They're more similar to a single-family home than they are multifamily, in terms of how we assess projects.
Yeah, I'm not sure how ITE is going to classify those because they have different, completely different classifications even for 55-plus communities. They don't use just regular single-family. There's low-rise, mid-rise, high-rise. Everybody skins that cat a little different.
This isn't exclusive of 55-plus?
No, no, no. But we'll have another project that's going to kind of have this same proposal in the not-too-near-future where there's going to be some, again, cottages. It will have some townhome style as well. And again, we've just had, we've had to pick which we feel it is most like. And when we surveyed our surrounding communities who were grappling with that same thing, because a lot of them have the same situation, everybody kind of agreed that the apartment regulations fit the style more so than like a subdivision because there's no subdividing happening.
That inherently decreases potentially the density of our multifamily zoning, and the purpose of multifamily zoning is to increase the density. And so what precedent we're setting is to say it's multifamily, it's low-density, but that seems less consistent. And the way that UDO is worded, the more restrictive interpretation prevails. That's almost verbatim what the UDO says, is that the more restrictive interpretation, and when there's ambiguity, should prevail. So I'm a little concerned at what this means, almost like the project that we just saw around townhomes being put down, and then we can account for them, and then all of a sudden, there are 100 of them that are now contributing. And it's, we work on precedent a lot, and so it gives me a lot of concern.
Yeah, I would generally agree with that. The only thing that I, because you are, it's one story, it's not going to be multiple stories. It does allow them to move them a little closer together, but that is not going to offset the reduction.
Okay, I believe I've heard from all council members on this, and you've had a chance to debate this. As you well know, it comes back to us with a unanimous vote from...
I have more questions for the applicant.
Would you please move along quickly? Okay.
We'll take the time it takes.
Somebody from the applicant, if you wouldn't mind taking the podium.
In the supplemental materials that were provided to us a few weeks ago, there was a letter from HH Hunt, which is an adjacent property owner, is that correct?
Yes.
And it was in support of the project. What was the purpose of submitting that as, with, to the council?
I just think it was a reflection of an adjacent property owner who has a vested interest in the outcome of the case expressing their support, nothing more.
That would constitute a satisfactory relationship with the joining property owner?
I would believe so, yeah.
And also a letter of support from Richard Barta, of course. And the other adjacent property owner, were there other satisfactory relationships created there as well?
To my knowledge, but I might not be the best person to speak on that. David, I'll let you do, cover that.
We reached out to all adjacent property owners, including Mr. Jurgen on multiple occasions. We did not get responses from anybody.
You're aware that a part of a multifamily too is achieving a satisfactory relationship with the surrounding property owners, correct?
Sure.
And you've not done that, correct?
We would like to think we haven't received any negative feedback directly. I think that's what we, I think that's what I've heard from David.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, this matter is ripe for a motion if you're ready.
Mayor, I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 6 of the staff report as our own. However, I also move the town council to deny rezoning CZMP 2203. His request is not reasonable to the public interest because it would likely not allow and encourage shared use in mixed-use developments, support more 55-plus housing opportunities, create neighborhood appearances by reloading driveways and using alleys, and promoting walking in front of homes and allowing trash removal to be kept out of sight.
Okay.
Okay, a motion is made before the council in a second, so it's properly before you.
Is there a question?
Yeah, I'm going to get...
For the sake of people watching, is this, are you moving that we deny it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just set audience on this, okay.
Okay. So everybody knows what they're voting on. You can either approve or deny it, and we will go from there. So if you favor the motion made by Mr. Singleton to deny the rezoning request, would you vote yes?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Yeah. If you do not approve of the motion before you to deny the request, would you vote no? Okay. I think I heard everybody's vote, but Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on this particular vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Barringer? Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. I heard the votes clear at that time. So the motion that Mr. Singleton... So the, the motion that Mr. Singleton put forth is, is approved and the rezoning request is denied. Jeff, is there anything else we need to take up? Okay, all right. So the chair declares that this particular motion does not pass. Thank you all for your time, energy. Okay, we will now go to the next item on our agenda, which is committee reports. Do we have any reports from a committee this time? None, yeah, okay. Mr. Manager, I will recognize you at this time.
I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Town Manager Miller to give you an update on the Talk of the Town report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. With your agenda packet is the December edition of Talk of the Town, our monthly report to council. Just want to highlight a few items on the report and then entertain any questions that the council may have. First, just wanted to make sure that council was aware, as well as the public, that the Garner Recreation Center will be closed starting this Friday, the 23rd, through Monday, January 2nd. They'll be closed for the town holidays, but also the floors are being refinished at the Rec Center during this time period. All programs and services that would typically be hosted at the Garner Recreation Center will be moved to the Avery Street Recreation Center. And more information about all those activities and programs can be found on the town website. And the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Department is also sharing the information with their customers directly and also on social media. A quick update on the town's leaf removal progress. We actually have an update that's current as of today, so it's a little bit more current than the report. As of today, we have completed three complete cycles of the leaf collection program. So that means, starting in January, we'll be able to go back to our normal routine and our schedule as well. So we're very proud of all the work that's happened. It was a heavy leaf collection time period, so excited that we're able to get three cycles completed before the holidays. Also, just wanted to take a moment to mention a solid waste schedule. Because the holidays do fall on the weekend, it will not impact the solid waste schedule. So solid waste schedules will be the same schedules as we have every day and will not be impacted by the holidays. Also, just to remind council, we have scheduled in the new year, the, some community public meetings regarding a possible fire merger with the Garner Rescue Fire Department. The meetings will be scheduled, have been scheduled for January 11th. We'll host one here at Town Hall and the second will be hosted on January 12th at the Panther Branch Community Center. More information about those meetings is on the town's website. We have shared some information with the community. We're also going to share it again after the holidays to make sure the community's aware about these community meetings. And so finally, I just wanted to quickly, if you turn to the last page of the Talk of the Town report, we have our monthly Garner info analytics. So the last 30 days, we've had about 25 requests come in to the Garner info app. Of those requests, 96% have been completed or in progress and Public Works inspections is responding to 84% of those requests that have come in. So that's just a brief overview of your report this month. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Thank you, it was a good report.
I do have a question from this member. And just, just curiosity, Rec Center hasn't been open that long and we're refinishing the floors. I wonder, was there an issue or, I know when the floors were done, we had some issues with the roof, did that cause some problems? I'm just curious, it just seems kind of quick to be refinishing the floors.
I was going to say, this is more routine sort of maintenance on the floors. There's just a lot of heavy use on the floors between basketball leagues, volleyball, pickleball, all those kinds of things. So this would be sort of a routine type of maintenance, is my understanding.
Typical for any gym.
Oh, I know, I know. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so it's, that's specific to our Rec Center. We're just taking the opportunity to use the window of time to get that done.
You weren't here for all the fun and delays we had, so. I'm sure you've been updated and know about it. I also wanted to mention in Ms. Miller's report about the EV charging stations, I know staff's been working with that, I think with Duke Energy. And I talked to Mr. Beasley and he said that they're supposed to start sometime in mid to late January and it'd be done in three to four weeks?
They've already started some of the site work, utility work on the parking lot. So if you see that work that's happening right outside, yes, they've already started that. So they'll, they'll hope to get the equipment shipped and delivered by January and then the installation will happen there as well.
Actually, breaking update, all the equipment came in and it's installed. We just are waiting on, at this site, not at the Rec Center site, but we're waiting for confirmation back from Duke as to when they will go live. But they actually got the painting done and, and most of the equipment in this week, sooner than we expected, so now we're just waiting for a go-live.
You say there are three stations there, aren't there, out here?
There's four here at the library.
Excuse me, four, okay.
Two, two double stations, right now where it is, and then same at the Rec Center.
So we're happy to report that one's actually moving ahead of schedule.
Will it be on the Rec Center, will it be on the Montague Street side, on the Purvis Street side, or?
Purvis Street side.
Purvis Street. Further from the facility itself, so it'll be more accessible to public, the park, public parking is sort of angled in off of Purvis Street.
Got you. Okay, very good, thank you.
Just one quick follow-up on that and I'll get other council members. Do I understand the, the ones that will be available out at the fire station, what is it, five, those would be strictly for town use, is that right?
Or staff, staff there at the facility.
They won't be accessible to the public, right?
County staff, fire staff and Garner staff. Say that again.
Yeah, those will not be available to the general public.
They're not intended for the general public.
I thought that, I wanted to just confirm.
Being the nature of that facility, yeah, they were never intended to be
Right.
general public stations.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Was, was that all? Does anybody else have a question for Ms. Miller? Okay.
The only other thing I had was just a reminder of the holiday closings, just to let the public know, we will be closed December 23rd through the 26th for the holiday, and then we'll also be closed on January the 2nd for New Year's, and then also January the 16th for MLK, Martin Luther King Day.
And that will be a virtual kind of presentation, right? Not an in-person?
Lady has decided to do that virtually again this year.
Right.
Just the 23rd and 26th. I thought it was the 23rd to 26th and the 27th.
Oh, 27, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because we do three.
Yeah, Monday and Tuesday, I'm sorry.
Rodney's going to be on the 27th by himself.
Well, I'm always on duty.
Didn't text Mr. Dickinson that day.
I'm always on duty. Yeah, the 27th, I'm sorry. I skipped, I forgot the Tuesday.
The Tuesday.
I got my days.
Okay.
I'm going to make sure to text you Tuesday morning.
23rd through the 27th. Come over and get my gift? Okay.
Just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. I will be taking a vacation from the 22nd to the 2nd. So if you, if you need me, I will have my cellphone, but I won't be planning to do work during that time. It's my first vacation in like five years. Yes, thank you, and well-deserved, I'm sure. All right, I'll start down on this side, I guess, I'm not sure, you know, Mr. Matthews?
Just nothing but Merry Christmas everybody and hope 23 is going to be a good year for us, and I think it will be. And thank you for all the goodies.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Singleton?
I'll just follow up. People are thankful for our leaf, what the contractor, what All-Star does. You know, not every town picks up leaves like we do. I think Raleigh goes cycles twice the whole year, through the following, the next year. So we've already done three through the town and, and of course, they've got the bulk of it up, but they're still, I saw somebody today put a huge pile out. I don't think they've been saving them. They were working on them, but I appreciate the hard work they do, I appreciate the work our Public Works does, and Merry Christmas to everyone also. And I'm going to call Rodney on the 27th in the morning.
After nine.
I will go this way.
You answered my text at 7:30 this morning.
6:45, actually.
What'd you say?
6:45, actually.
She texted me before 5:45, like I was waiting to get it. I kid you not.
Okay, some people are morning people.
I was not up at that time, I'll admit, so. Ms. Behringer?
I just wanted to Merry Christmas to everybody, hope you have a wonderful holiday. I have never seen so many Christmas presents at my place here, so I am overwhelmed. Thank you.
It happens when you're on the naughty list.
Mr. Dillinger?
Oh, no. I, I just, it popped into my head, is there a timeline for the LNG project downtown, like downtown? If we, is there an update on when they think they're going to break ground? If not, we, I mean, it's.
The last update was generally spring of this upcoming year. If we get something more specific, we'll pass it along.
Okay, thanks. I just can't, in my head, just, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and all that good stuff. I'm not, but there's, some people are.
I would just say that last night events with the mayor's dinner, Christmas dinner was outstanding, well-done. The entertainment was fantastic with the Hall Sisters and their great singing. I remember seeing them some years ago when they were little girls. They are ladies now, and their talent is exceptional. And the food was well-done and everything was, was just well-done overall, and hats off to the staff, because I know that the staff was instrumental in pulling everything together to making the town of Garner look well, look very good. And as everyone has said, happy holidays to you all. And believe it or not, I'm on leave myself from one of my jobs, the other, the other two are still going strong. But like I say, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, and I would echo your comments about the, the event and the lady sitting back there in the corner deserves a lot of credit, and that's Ms. Gibson back there. And there were others, certainly the town manager and system managers, I think probably Ms. Jones as well, I don't know, but a lot of people made that an important event and a happy event. I have technically one, one course of business. I sent to the, I think the council members, the league each year puts together a committee where they develop legislative proposals and they get together and hear from the committee from people across the state. At any rate, then they take those and sort of refine them and publish them out there and then, so each, each town gets a vote on those. As I noted in the past, we need to let them know who our voting delegate will be. In the past, I know I have done it on at least one occasion and be happy to do it again, but, and before I vote, I think I'd have an opportunity to publish what those items are for you. So what say you in terms of who you want your voting delegate to be from the town of Garner?
I move that the mayor continue to be our voting delegate.
Second?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, I won't hold it against you.
No.
Okay, that's fine.
No, we'll be on the record.
Okay. Just don't call for the question now, okay?
Don't do it.
Don't give him the ideas.
I've already pulled it up, so show you.
Move on, move on, move on.
Merry Christmas to you all, and we're not off yet, right? We've got to come back tomorrow. But any rate, thank you all, it's been a kind of a long night, so, but we got through it, so Merry Christmas.
No meeting, no, no work session and no first meeting in January.
That's right. Sort of get a, yeah. And I thank our attorney out there who stayed, I mean, not the attorney, excuse me, the engineer, there is a difference. Okay, all right, all right. Okay, with that, is there anything else for the, for the group? Do I need to hear from my system manager here? Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn.
Vote.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, declared adjourned.